Item number three.
Delegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is recognized gifts. Again, appreciate everybody being here and some fast round signing too. Move on to item number five, which is new business. Tim, if you want to start us off in new business.
Again, we've got forty-six in custody. Everything's, everything's pretty much rocking and rolling. Been extremely busy with calls and we've had two or three drug arrests last week, working on a couple of other stolen property deals. Other than that, we're just, I mean, we're busy at the inmate labors out working. Trustees and Aaron have been doing a fabulous job cleaning up again. We submitted Friday the JAG grant. The JAG grant, you had either bulletproof vests, which we wound up getting donations and getting everybody new vest over the last year and a half. Radios, we applied for the pipeline grant, we got it, we're working on the communication system, Aaron and I have both been working on that. So we've got that taken care of. Body cams, we, we had body cams. So what we did is we applied, we, we do need one more vehicle and we applied for ten thousand dollars to go for the purchase of that vehicle. If we get it. We should know in the next forty-five to sixty days if we get it, but I didn't, I did not use that lady that we used in the past to write the grant because she takes, you know, ten to twenty percent of the grant. That's a grant that I wrote a hundred times, so I wrote the grant myself. That way we get all the money. So that was submitted on Friday. Other than that, Mona's work, Mona and I have been working on budget for next year. Let me rephrase that. Working on seeing where we're gonna be, where we're gonna be short and what we've got going on for the next year's budget, which hopefully you guys will approve for all. So, other than that, everything is, everything's good. I, um, I had to work shift the other night, we had a deputy, we had a deputy shortage. So I worked all day, they came out at six o'clock that night, worked until six in the morning. So, that's where, that's where we're all right now. Other than that, everything is, uh, is, is good. Jail wise, like I said, forty-six inmates, things ran smooth, we've got two big court days again this week. Got a couple DOC trips planned, so other than that, the jail is operating very smoothly as well.
As far as on my end, last two weekends, we, McAllister Firefighter Classic was going on, which is actually evolved past firefighters, it's all first responders to include emergency management, lots of training going on down there over the last about ten, twelve days. I attended two weekends worth of training down there and won't get into specifics of the training, but we were talking about how to develop a countywide strike force for our teams, get some specialized training, water rescue, vehicle extrication, things of that nature. That's in the process of building, as we know, firefighters are very proactive on that right now. As far as the inmates, team said we're really busy working on a lot of different things. We helped get things prepped and ready for the rodeo, or not the rodeo, the shrine circus that come in. We also worked getting the fairgrounds prepped and ready and did a lot of work out there at the, uh, at the county show barn, doing quite a bit of work, had to include some structural work, string and metal and things of that nature. We also have been repainting a few things exterior wise out at the jail, getting that stuff, keeping it dressed up and looking nice out there. And that's through a lot of guy at this point. We're gonna, we're gonna be kinda slow this week just due to the rain, it's gonna be hard to get out, getting them working in the mud and stuff, so we're, we're pretty slow right, and gonna be, looks like this week, so.
If anybody can go out and look, look at the show barn, that thing has been redone, it looks very well. And I mean, that, Aaron and the inmate crew, I mean, they have done a fantastic job out there getting that thing looking the way it looks, along with board members at the show facility, so you guys can go by and look at it, it looks really good.
I'm gonna thank Sandra for letting us get the, uh, the spray rig, cause we have sprayed and sprayed and sprayed and fences are cleared out, getting a lot clearer, you know, we've got debris cut down and the perimeter's looking really good now, we've been able to spray it and it's looking really, really good out there now.
One thing, if you guys can, that Aaron and I talked about with the inmate labors right now when it's wet, we're getting kinda, if you guys have stop signs that y'all need cleared up or intersections that you need cleaned up, let us know, have your guys write them down and then we'll put it on a list and we'll get the guys out there to knock those intersections down, get those stop signs cleaned up. So if you guys have, or need stop signs changed out at places, let us know, cause we can, we can get that done.
I did get a heat and air estimate from Matt Webster and it's four thousand dollars for the assessor's office where the computer work is. Haven't got one on DNR on the voltage, but if we go with a heat and air system in there, it's gonna be four thousand dollars. Now, the last time they were here, they put an extra battery and a battery costs a hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Their bill last time was eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. They come three times a year and replace them, then that's gonna be over half what we, what we need to be paying. We, we just need to think about it and see what we need to do. We can put a unit in, but I think the wall is gonna be too wide to fit one in for the drainage. That's just something that we need to take care of, cause it does get very hot in there. On the insurance and workman's comp, I've talked to the gentleman this morning on the workman's comp, he's gonna be emailing me some information on it. I've just about got the insurance kinda quoted on what it is and says I get both of them together then, so we'll get with y'all and see what we need to do on that. PSO, I'm sure everybody's been getting a letter in, even at their homes, that they're gonna be trimming up the trees. We did get one at the barn also and so around the courthouse before winter comes, apparently they're gonna be trimming up where the lines are. And the eight seventy-one Chuck Sullivan did seem to have their email the other day and we are not gonna have to be setting that up. So, they're gonna be doing the ACLU is gonna be doing that, it's not quite in the state.
Yeah, not the ACLU won't, they're, they're being set up. That was a typo in my, on my phone. ACLU had nothing to do with that other than probably monitoring something, you know? But, uh, no, they, it'll be set up on a state level, not at the county level. So we were mistaken last week and then we had to set them up here.
Okay, so we got that and I haven't told Gail yet, but I'll get her on that. I think that's all I've got for today.
Any more new business?
Can I bring one here? Okay. My name is Janelle Clark and we live one block north of the high school on Perry Road, where the city limit sign is. Now, most of Perry Road is forty-five miles an hour, till you hit the city limit line and it's twenty-five. And they're going at least fifty by our house. Is there any way to put like a thirty-five somewhere between, you know, up a little farther so they'll start slowing down? Before they get to our house?
Well, that, that is a school zone, does that start the school zone, Tim?
Well, no, the school zone's at the block.
The school zone's at the block and, and I mean, I'll tell you, last week I had deputies out there and we've got, we had three or four running over ninety. How many mile an hour?
Yeah.
We had one at ninety-two.
I'm telling you, it's horrible.
Right there at her house, you'll get them, you'll get them at sixty-five or seventy?
Minimum.
Every day right there at her house?
My mom and I get up at six-thirty in the morning to walk just up and then our dead end road, cause I'm not getting out there, this morning even.
It was bad.
And I'm like, okay.
I'll, yeah, I, I live right across the road from her and what you can, as they're headed out of town, people are flooring it.
And they're doing it even coming in, they're not slowing down.
I had a call this morning, uh, the gentleman was going north in a decent black truck and he was probably going a hundred, a hundred and ten. And a school bus just left that area.
And the problem is, and the problem for our end is, the more times we're either at Kenna or McCurtin or Whitefield working school zone traffic. So, with, when we've got one guy, they know that we're not gonna be on Perry Road, they know we're gonna be in a school zone traffic.
I mean, between us and Leon's old house.
It's horrible.
We've got a little, that's Mama's, that's a little drive back there, y'all could probably buy enough tickets.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, it's just our shortage of.
I understand, but that's why I'm here, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've asked them, and they're there.
A thirty-five mile per hour.
We can change that and we could probably start putting up some slow signs, stop, slow ahead.
They need to slow down.
No, I'm not, just, like I said, last week we've got, and I called Sandra the other day, we had one at ninety-two. I mean, that's right there, coming, going north.
And see that daycare is right across the street too, right there across the street from the high school and people are letting, it's bad, it's really bad.
Put the city help?
Yeah, I mean, and they work the school zone traffic.
Oh, they do, but see, that's.
The problem is, as soon as they, as soon as they hit that, that twenty-five or thirty-five.
It's twenty-five.
They're, I mean, they're, they've slowed down. I mean, it's, it's from about Leon Upton's house.
This, this, the city limit sign.
Where that new pavement hits is where it just, and they just.
They're, they're going at least seventy and by the time they hit the twenty-five, they're still at probably seventy.
What's the name of that road?
Perry Road.
It's North Perry Road.
Yeah, it's, that's the only reason I'm here, I'm like, you know, that's our.
And they do, and I, I would tell you, since they paved the road past me, it, it's worse, cause they used to slow down before they hit the dirt road, now they just keep going.
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
I can't stop them from speeding, but I can tell my office that we're not gonna give a deferred to anybody on Perry Road, they'll just have to pay the ticket.
Oh, that sounds good to me, but that's all we were asking, is a little ways up, put like a thirty-five to get them hopefully to hit the break before they hit the twenty-five.
Speeds on ahead.
That too, you know, cause I know during the summer it's not, but.
And I'll tell you something else that helps, and if the county wanted to purchase one, move around, cause I know we have Perry Road, we've got Longah Valley that they, that they gripe about, I mean, you take a, and I know you guys understand, but you take a dirt road, you make it, they gripe cause there's too much dust and you take a paved road, it's an air, it's a laned strip. But, I'll tell you, a good thing that helps right there when they come into town is that flash and red and blue light. The city has that flash and red and blue light sign that, that helps because folks don't, you know, folks think, when they see red and blue lights, they think it's the police, even though you know that sign's there and you've been there, but when they see that red and blue, if you could put one of those, if you could put one of those maybe and then move it around periodically to different places, that might help tremendously.
Yeah, okay, well, I appreciate you letting me bring that up, I just, it's just not safe. And like I said, we've got the daycare and the school. So, I appreciate you letting me bring it up, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more new business? Okay, we'll move on to item number six, approved permission proceeding from previous meeting. Item number seven's gonna be approved blanket POs. Southside Fire Department's getting one for two hundred dollars, kept in home time. They're also getting one for three hundred and fifty dollars to total express. Now, the SSF, seven thousand dollars to fleet tour. SSF, Performance Foods for sixteen hundred dollars. SGAF, eight hundred dollars to fleet tour, I'm gonna do the blanket POs for this week.
I'll make a motion on Sarah.
Item number eight is gonna be discussed here at the population, three twenty-four, eight claim form for Longah Valley Road resupplies. Deputy Perry, y'all.
This is for the huge parcel. And everything that's left is an acquisition, I mean, a appraisal, it would be a appraisal.
So I'm gonna make a motion on item number eight, this is for two thousand five hundred and twenty-five hours.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Particular, same as I.
Yes. That's it, Karen's gotta do her thing to it. I'll take it over to the girls and get their coffee and then plus I got an easement to file too to go with it. Y'all be good with me.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome. I'll see you Friday back Monday. All right, I'll be there, I guess I'll see you Wednesday. I'll see you whenever I see ya. Bye, guys.
Okay, item number nine will be discussed considering application sheet financial statement for fiscal year six, thirty-eighteen, and estimated needs for fiscal year ten and six thirty-three thousand nine hundred.
We just made a, we made a motion on item number.
Thank you.
Item number ten, discuss effect action signing and agreeing, Foci and Haci and GLA leaving PLLC to represent Haskell County versus Oklahoma Department of Corrections and reference to repayments of lost funds but not proper reimbursement from the Oklahoma Department of Corrections on JNS inmates.
I have, I sent this to Karen, I sent this to, I sent this to Karen this morning. At first last week, sent this to District Attorney Chuck Sullivan for review, but this is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Haskell County, Oklahoma, and basically this is so we can enter into an agreement with Yoffi, Foci and Yoffi to proceed with joining a class action lawsuit with other sheriff's offices across the state of Oklahoma to sue the Department of Corrections to get money back for the JNS inmates that were not getting paid for, meaning that if time to gavel, if a JNS is delayed for one reason or another, that even though that the gavel has been done and they have been sentenced, we are not getting payment back for those inmates until we get a JNS incentive. So sometimes, due to, due to the shortage of staff or differences in attorney's thought processes or the signature of a defense attorney or prosecutor to get the JNS done, there could be, you know, five, six, seven day lapse, up to a week or so. So, we're asking that we join in to get money and damages that have occurred and it's not just us, and last I, last I heard, there's over twenty sheriff's offices already signed off on it. Pittsburgh County's already signed off the same form, I sent to Chuck this week, Chuck, Chuck looked at it and went through it, approved it, so that's why we tabled it from last week to this week. And I think, Chuck, do you have anything to go on this DOC lawsuit?
Yeah, just as, as Tim mentioned, Pittsburgh County, which is the other county in my district, has already signed on for this. It's an agreement, but you're not, there's no, to be really clear, the county is paying nothing for the representation, you're simply agreeing to it, so it's a contingency based agreement with the law firm. And so the only payment they will receive is if there's any recovery. And I'm encouraging you guys to sign up for it so that we're in line, basically. It's, it's very similar to, I think we're gonna talk about the opioid lawsuit as well, it's, it's a similar type thing. Let's make sure that we have a place in line when there's recovery. We have been damaged, both my counties have held inmates and not been paid by DOC, so we actually have damages on that. How much that works out to be, we'll see, but, but we do have damages there. So, it's, it's my suggestion that we get in line for that, we sign this agreement so that our place at the table is secured, should there be a settlement or any kind of judgment.
And here's the other side to this, it's kind of unique, is our Oklahoma Attorney General, Mike Hunter, has already written a letter to the Oklahoma Department of Corrections, basically saying that what they are doing is unconstitutional and that they should, they should, they should reimburse the county for their whole things. The Department of Corrections Director, Mr. Albal, has told Oklahoma sheriffs to sue him if they want their money. So that's what we're doing. So his own legal counsel has already said, what you're doing is illegal, you cannot do this. So, from what we're understanding, is Department of Corrections is going to have to obtain outside counsel to represent them because Mike Hunter's office cannot represent them after he's already told them what they're done is, what they're doing is not lawful. So, that's where we are today. And we would ask, I know the sheriff's office and I believe District Attorney Chuck Sullivan would ask that the commissioners agree to this and we get placed on this list to try to recoup some of the loss that we've had.
Mike, motion signed, agree?
Particular?
Yes.
Yes.
All true.
Okay. Item number eleven is discuss considering hassle county schedule expenditures or federal rewards present year. Well, you got twenty-four, seven. Seventeen, eighteen, I saw. Fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, okay. Just need a motion on it.
Paul Story?
Okay. Item number twelve, we discuss considering title sixty to us Haskell County Public Trust Facility Committee.
I have looked at it and we, we looked at it last week, the changes that I, that I had requested had been made. I think the only thing that we need to set in for now is for you guys to authorize to approve it and then we will set a special meeting for the Haskell County Public Trust Facility to meet, let them go over the application or the contract, and if they approve it, then the following week we'll get it back on the agenda and it'll be signed with our, I'll sign as chairman of that board and present it back to you guys.
Well, I feel confident for sheriff and DA's looked at it, it has been a motion.
I'll make a motion on item twelve.
I'll say.
Yes.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Yes. Chuck, do you think we have to take this back to the public trust facility board after the commissioners approve it?
This is a renewal, right?
No, this will be the initial, with the, with the initial.
Yes.
Okay, and then after that it would be renewed, I think we take it back for a special meeting.
Yeah, I would.
Could we potentially have a special meeting Wednesday, or is that too soon?
Wednesday, I have to be at Oklahoma City.
Well, you don't, you don't have to be here for that. But Monday, so, so we can set a three o'clock meeting Wednesday to get it signed, could you be here at three o'clock? Joe, could you be here?
And I'll get a hold of Frank.
Don't get old friends. So, Karen, could you just make a special meeting for Wednesday at three o'clock?
Twenty-six?
Yeah, twenty-six, just for the, and the agenda item would just be to approve the Haskell, the interlocal cooperating jail financing agreement between the B O C C and the H C D F A.
Would it be here?
It would be. Let's make that at one o'clock, that way we're not tying up everybody's afternoon. We get here, get it done, be out of here.
Moving on, item number thirteen, discuss considering hassle county zoning ordinance.
Okay, on this liquor bottle drink, and I got with Joe Daniels and also the ABL. Okay, on this liquor market drink, and I went with, um, Joe Daniels and also the ABL, uh, ABEL committee. And the city has drawn up one. I've been working with Bobby Mouser on this one. Um, and when they put in for a license, then they let them know where they're gonna put one in and make sure. At this time, the Hask County does not have a zoning, fire, safety, health ordinance, or certificate of occupation. Uh, uh, but anyway, they have to come in at Karen's office. She has to fill out, you know, their name, their business, their address, their phone number, and then the chairman signs it. Uh, I don't know if you've had anybody come in. I haven't, most of it's been in, into the city limits. But you have county and then you have city and town. Have you?
Coconut Shack.
No, they've been open before.
They've been open before, but they still, they still have to go through this.
Yeah, because they have known that there were some.
They've been done before, right. But I mean, I mean, I didn't know if there was any new ones. So anyway, this is, um, we need to have this on the agenda to sign. I'm making motion on number thirteen.
Same as that?
Yes.
Paul Story?
Commissioner, if I can, our chairman, Story, did you sign page nine of this agreement on the, page, the Title sixty agreement? If you could sign page nine, Karen. Okay. Okay, yeah, I guess you don't, we signed it or not?
Yeah, we signed it.
Yeah, then Chuck will sign it. I got it. I must spell your name underneath that. It's a signature.
Possible to my bill. So you want me to write my name in cursive?
Item number fourteen, we discuss considering nearly fees for placement tax.
On the, this is something that, um, we can, as a county can charge. Uh, it's basically a levy annual occupational tax privileges in operation for mixed drinks, beverage, beer, wine, catering, etc. And we can, as a county, because the city is in, city and town are gonna do one, they're gonna charge five hundred dollars for the liquor stores. And they're gonna charge fifty for business. So, and I kind of got with him and kind of let us know, we don't really wanna overdo what they do, which we do not have any liquor stores in our county. But if, I do know that they do get this, um, once a year and they do fill them out and send them back. And this is something, if we don't start it now, we can also start it later. It's a alcohol beverage law enforcement. And this is something that the county gets, you just have to report how much is being paid in and the county get, keeps it. So I don't know if we wanna do it now, or if we wanna make a fee on it and then bring it back into a meeting for a revolution on how much we've set it for.
I personally, just now looking at it, I'd wanna look at it.
Okay, and that's fine. We can table it.
And that's my, would you take, Claudia?
Yeah.
I'm like, I'm like when you're talking about it, you know, for the, for putting a tax on it.
And it could be just like fifty dollars, you know, what they charge. Uh, that's what the city's gonna do for any business.
Well, that's pertaining all businesses that are filling up on.
Deb, you got your copy, um?
Looks like you can adjust the price on that separate page.
Yeah, and you can.
What's other carries charged, Karen, or, senior?
Well, I just done through the city and the town. I don't know what the other ones do. Um, I did call Talafol. They haven't received any or enforced it in a while. But, um, this paper is sent in every year and they have to send it back anyway. If they have special events, license, a bottle club. But we can look at it and table it till next week and if we want, you know, if we want to do it. We don't, you don't have to do this. You can if you want. We're gonna table number fourteen.
Mike, can I offer my table?
One second, Lou.
Sanders.
Okay, item number fifteen will be discussed considering annual resolution for Hask County Election Board.
I've over, I've looked at this also and I, I feel like the DA needs to look at this before it gets signed.
Sorry. That's it to get it approved. Anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, on fifteen, okay, um, a revolution needs to be looked at the DA before we sign it. Um, that, um, and then their findings on it, if there's any changes that need to be made.
What do you want to table? Do you want to, we're gonna need to.
Yes, that's also been tabled till next week and then we can go from there.
Sandra makes a motion to table item number fifteen. Tim? Low call in fifteen.
My name's Stacey.
How first?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Sanders.
Yes.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Part three?
Yes.
Okay, it's been asked that we move to seventeen and eighteen and bypass sixteen. Did we get through seventeen, eighteen? If nobody has any objections. Well, I know that you have to have that. So if nobody has any objections, we're gonna, I might, we're gonna go to item number seventeen, which will be executive session.
Commissioner, I'd ask that on the executive session, if I put this on the agenda, that Chuck will be here and then we bring in the two, the attorney that's here to discuss this issue. Would be the people who's allowed along with the board. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah, we're gonna have to have attorneys.
Well, I'm out. Just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, no problem, Tom.
Okay, that was my question.